Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, November 15th, 2021. We have the Westwood Select Board meeting. And of course, in accordance with attendance to call order pursuant to mask Governor Baker's June 16th, 2021, order extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. National law chapter 38, section 18, to allow for remote meeting participation until April 1st, 2022, November 15th, 2021, select board meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the board. We'll also grant Westwood Media the right to record this meeting for those that are unable to join us this evening. Under the chairman's update tonight, we have two things. First, we'd like to remind you that next year, 2022, marks the 125th anniversary of the town of Westwood, and what planning will start the first of the year. If you are interested in volunteering to help with the 125th plan anniversary planning process, please email the select board or contact Tish at 781-326-4172. Because God knows she doesn't have enough to do, and she'll be now taking volunteers for the 125th planning. A few notes on that from the 100th anniversary in the town publication, Westwood became incorporated on April 2nd, 1897. At that time, the top floor of the Colburn School held the town meetings. The present day town hall was built in 1908 through 1910. And when the new town hall opened, officers were housed on the first floor, and in the basement was the jail. The original name proposed for the town of Westwood was to be Nahanton. But guess what? Those from Nahant objected, and so they settled for the second name, which of course was Westwood. The first town pound was built in 1700, the year 1700, and was used as a lost and found for animals that wandered off. The town sealed depicts the town pound. So a little bit of history there, but we're looking for volunteers for our 125th anniversary. Second on our list, we have the holiday tree lighting. Town plans a continuous tradition of displaying holiday lights outside of town hall this year, and we're also looking to add lights to other municipal buildings in town, and are working hard to secure additional lights that are needed amid a shortage of lights that are available. And if you don't think so, just try a department store, try to find lights. We have received a few inquiries about putting lights on ornamental streetlights on Washington Street and High Street. But unfortunately, there is not a power source, I know that lights, but there is not a power source to put the additional lights on. And we will continue to work on that. Weather permitting, we expect the holiday lights to officially go on sometime around the first week of December. Other our scheduled action, we have a number of things this evening. First, we have a continuation of our public hearing from EverSource Gas, a grant of location done at Dartmouth Street, of which we began this hearing before, but had to wait for our police, our fire chief to be able to look at this and make sure it was okay. So Tish is the chief joining us?
We should have John Reed, Jared Blandino, and Sean Coughlin from EverSource Gas.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you.
Nice to have you back. All right, so. Who wants to take the lead? I know you've already presented to us before, so there's no necessarily need to do it all over again. Chris, in the meantime, we've had Chief Deckers take a look at this.
Yes, we have. He's in support of the plan.
How's that? Okay. Have a little technical difficulties here?
Could you hear me now?
We can hear you, Chris.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So is there any questions from anyone? I don't want to make you go through the presentation that we had before. It was pretty in-depth. And Chief Deckers has signed off on it. So John, any questions?
No, I'm ready to make a motion when you guys are.
Rob, any questions before we do this?
No additional questions from me, Michael.
Okay, great. Then John will let you take that motion.
I move the select board grant permission to N-Star Gas Company doing business as EverSource Energy. Permission to install two new two-inch diameter event posts on the south side of Dartmouth Street, plus or minus 385 feet east of University Avenue, as indicated in the plan as described in the order recorded with the town, and to obtain the necessary permits as required by the town. The select board held a duly posted the public hearing, including notices to a butters.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hearn.
I think you also want to close the public hearing on this.
Okay, then we will take.
I'll make a motion to re- I'll make a motion to re-close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Hearn, for your guidance. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. Good luck.
Thank you. I'll just, if I can quickly acknowledge and just appreciate all the support the town provided with, in terms of preparing the application, Tish especially, thank you for helping us, guide us through the process. And we'll be in touch in the early part of next year with respect to the coordination of schedule and other permitting details. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for EverSource Electric for grant of location of conduit service to 280 Washington Street. And so with that, the purpose here is to obtain a grant of location to install plus or minus 96 feet of conduit at the relocation pole number 121, and to provide new electrical service to 280 Washington Street. Joining us, we have Richard Scafoni and Shawna Kyle.
Does this involve cutting Washington Street?
It does not. It involves, it involves a cut in the driveway to the back of the new mixed-use building on Washington East Street.
I'm good, Michael.
Hi, Shawna.
Hi, how are you?
Great, thank you. How are you?
So yes, this one is for, for East Street, the northerly side, approximately 286 feet east of Washington Street. We're just relocating that pole so that they can run the conduit to the, to the new condo building.
Okay. I've had a chance to look at the plans and been through the diagrams. Johnny, any questions? Other than cutting, Rob, any questions to you? Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that has any questions? I don't see anything on the questions and answer. Tish, you don't see any, correct?
I don't see anything.
Okay, so based on that, seeing no questions?
I move the, I move the board grant permission to N-Star Electric doing business as EverSource Energy for grant of location to relocate and install one pole number 121-1 to provide new electric service to 280 Washington Street, and for EverSource to obtain the necessary permits required by the town. The select board held and duly posted tonight's public hearing, including notice to a butters.
Okay. I have a second, Mr. Gotti.
You're, you're moving, muted, sorry.
Sorry about that. I'm, I second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, folks, for joining us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Close the public hearing.
Yes. We should probably close it.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Did I hear a question?
Just one question. I just want to confirm that that vote was for both public hearings?
No, it looks like, you know, we have, yeah, we have it as two. We have two public hearings.
There's two public hearings.
So, so the applicant should stay for the second public hearing as well?
Yeah, and you have to close them individually, Nora.
I'll second the first, I'll second the motion that John made to close this public hearing.
Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
I vote aye as well to close this public hearing. Okay, next, we have a public hearing for the tax classification.
No, no, you have the EverSource for the grant of location.
All right, I take that back. So we have a, did I take them out of order? It looks like I did. Okay. We have a public hearing for EverSource Electric and Verizon to grant a location to relocate a pole. That pole is located at Electric for 280 Washington Street. So basically, we're granting permission to bring the conduit to there and as well as a telephone pole. Am I correct? Yes.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any questions from Mr. Hickey or Mr. Gotti?
I'm sorry, Pat, why, Pat, why is this two, two public hearings and two votes? See what's going on there?
There, there's a pole, and that pole carries both EverSource and Verizon, and that pole is located on a town lot. It's the, the little land in front of houses on East Street that need, that pole needs to be relocated out of some trees so that new lines can be added to it, and then so a conduit can be drawn off of that. The conduit is only for EverSource. So there are two different applications, two different hearings. You just approve the conduit, and now, now you're being asked to approve the pole relocation.
And it's also the way it was posted. Once it's posted that way, you can't really combine them.
But Nora, so we're not cutting East Street or Washington Street for any?
We are not, no. The work for this pole is fully within a grassed area on a town-owned lot.
Okay. I'm good. You're, you're good, Michael and Rob?
Rob, any other questions?
I mean, the only other question I had is, is where it says fixtures such as an anchor and a, and guys. I don't know the term guys. Is that, should that be guides or is that an actual electrical fixture?
Guys is a fixture.
Okay.
It's the wire that holds up the pole, that balances the pole so it stands straight.
Very good. I have no further questions.
Since this is a public hearing, I do not see any questions on the questions and answer. So this time, we'll do it in correct order, Mr. Hickey. We're going to close the public hearing first. Do I have a motion to close the public?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, you can't close the public hearing till you vote on it.
Okay, then. I stand corrected.
All right, okay. So, I move that the board grant permission to N-Star Electric doing business as EverSource Energy for grant of location to install approximately 98 plus or minus feet of conduit and to provide new electric service to 280 Washington Street, also for EverSource and the property owner of 280 Washington Street to obtain the necessary permits as required by the town. The select board held and duly posted tonight's public hearing, including notice to a butters.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well.
Okay, so now I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for the grant of location to EverSource Electric for conduit service to 280 Washington Street, known as public hearing number two.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. Okay, we now have a next public hearing, and this is on our tax classification for FY 2022. And so my understanding is where that we will open the hearing, but we are not ready to go forward with the procedure. Is that right, Pam?
Yes, so each year, the Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing to establish the tax classification. You approve a tax shift factor based on a recommendation from the Board of Assessors, and that determines how much of the tax levy is paid by the commercial and residential property classes. In the current year, commercial represents about 14% of total value, but because of the classification factor, they pay almost 25% of the total taxes. So for FY 22, we do not yet have our FY 22 values certified by the Department of Revenue, and that needs to occur first before you can vote on your classification factor. So John Kerr, our town assessor, is on the meeting now also. He is currently working to get those values finalized and submitted to the Department of Revenue, and we expect that to occur within the next week or so. So we would ask that you continue the public hearing until your next meeting on December 6th, and at that point, we will have all of the finalized information. The assessors will present their recommendation to you, and you would be able to vote the classification factor for FY 22.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing tonight to our next meeting.
I move, I move the select board to continue the FY 22 tax classification public hearing until the select board meeting on December 6th, 2021. Tonight's public hearing was duly posted to the town website in the town hall.
Real quick, Pam, before I second it, I'm assuming no impact in terms of any adverse for the delay, right? In turn, in terms of our process and anything like that?
No impact. We will have to, you know, we're trying to pre-prep as much as we can in with the Department of Revenue. When you vote the shift factor, that's our last step in submitting all of our information on what's called a tax recap, where the Department of Revenue approves the tax rate for the town. So we kind of have all the financial information already into them. We're making sure we're as clean as possible so that right after your vote that night, we can finalize everything the next day with them. Because then we do have a quick turnaround process to get our tax bills ready to mail out by January 1st.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. So we will continue this public hearing. We will not close it at this point in time, right, Mr. Hearn?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for Group One Automotive and five Class One Motor Vehicle license or seller's license. So we have members of the Group One Automotive, a purpose of the prime dealerships, or what many of us know as prime dealerships. Acura, the Audi, Mazda, the new Mazda, the Porsche, and the Mercedes, all of Group One in Providence. So with that, Tish, we have several people joining us this evening.
Yeah, John Zalos and a Gary, Nora Justin, J. Gary is the second one. He wasn't on my list. I'm sorry?
Joe Gary?
Yeah, they weren't on my list, but I will.
And do we have Lori as well?
No.
Good.
I have John and Mr. Gary. Oh, I do have Lori. I spoke too soon. Yes, she is. So Lori should be on her way. Lori just fell off, so maybe she can come back in.
Would you like to get started while we wait for Lori?
Sure, go ahead, Nora.
All right, so this is an application. As you, as you mentioned, prime dealerships are being sold to Group One. We have five dealerships in Westwood, all have current Class One auto dealer licenses, and we're asking to transfer those licenses from the prime dealerships to the Group One dealerships. All five of the applications are in good standing. Since the report you received from our licensing agent, we have confirmed that all police inspections have been done, and they've all passed. And hazmat, hazmat certificate has been issued. There's just a final inspection that's required at the Mazda dealerships.
Okay.
I'll also note that all of the, all of the properties, except for the Mazda property, will continue to be owned by the same owner and operate under the special permits that were previously issued. The Mazda dealership has a change in ownership that will require, a change in lessy, I should say, for that, they do not own that property. They lease it. And the change in lessy will require a new special permit, and for that, the ZBA is holding a hearing on Wednesday night to review a new special permit for the Mazda dealerships.
Okay. Well, welcome, John. Welcome, Mr. Gary, and welcome, Lori. So my, my only question is, and I'd just like to ask it, whether or not you will be as good a partner to the town of Westwood as Prime Motors has been?
Yeah, we will be a very good neighbor, and we'll continue what Lori is, what does in the community for us. So we're excited to have Lori join us as well.
The fact that I, that you have Lori is already speaking volumes. So Lori's been very kind to the town of Westwood, and we want to make sure that that continues.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hickey and Mr. Gotti, any questions?
No.
Okay, and since this is a public hearing, let's see if there are any questions. We've had a chance to read all of the information that you've given us. So seeing no questions or no questions in the chat, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board grant Class One Motor Vehicle agent or seller's licenses to Group One Automotive for the following five vehicle dealerships. Ira Acura of Westwood, 395 Providence Highway, Audi of Westwood, 375 Providence Highway, Ira Mazda, 420 Providence Highway, Porsche Westwood, 411 Providence Highway, Mercedes Benz of Westwood, 425 Providence Highway. With said licenses set to expire on December 31st, 2022, and for electronic signatures of the select board clerk to be affixed to the licenses. License issuance will be pending final inspection by public safety departments, zoning board of appeal, special permit decision, and submittal of final sale documentation and manufacturer contracts to the licensing agent.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Welcome to Westwood. Thank you for joining us this evening and good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
And now John will take a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, next on our agenda, we have Schulte Catering doing business as the Courtyard Boston, Gettum, Westwood. We have the change of the manager, manager application, which I guess has been before us several times, and they're back because they have a new manager of record at the Gettum-Westwood Courtyard. So Nora, did you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. So the, the new manager of record is Mildred Gonzalez, and she currently resides in Drake, Massachusetts. From 2014 until today, Mildred has been employed as a general manager in several married hotels throughout the state. And she was most recently employed at the Residence Inn in Westford, Mass, and at the Hampton Inn and Suites in Westford and Chelmsford. The Alcohol Review Committee has reviewed the application and, and recommends unanimously that the board approve it, and Mildred's query results have been favorable. Thank you.
So, okay. Questions, Mr. Hickey or Mr. Gotti?
No questions.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Will the select board approve Mildred Gonzalez as manager of record at Courtyard Boston, Gettum-Westwood, contingent upon alcohol beverages and control commission, ABCC approval, and for the electronic signatures of the select board to be affixed to the ABCC Licensing Authority Certification Board?
I second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And it looks like, Mildred, this is what you're going to get. So it is unanimous. Congratulations. Look forward to seeing you down there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very happy to be here.
Welcome to Westwood.
Thank you.
It seems to be the night of changing managers. We are, have Del Frisco's Grill up next.
All right, and, and we should be thankful.
Nick to come on in? Did you want to speak about this?
Sure, we should be thankful that all of these applications were able to successfully find new managers in, in today's client, that's climate. It's pretty impressive. So Del Frisco's Grill has requested a change of manager for Nicholas Phelps to be the new manager of record. Nicholas currently lives in West Roxbury, right nearby. He's managed multiple Del Frisco's restaurants in New York, Chicago, Philadelphia, and Houston. And he's actually been here as manager, if not manager of record, since July of this year. Nicholas's query results were favorable, and the Alcohol Review Committee did review this, and unanimously recommends that the board approve this change in manager.
Okay, welcome, Nick. So my understanding is Alicia hasn't really gone too far, right? She's now your boss above, my understanding. Is that correct?
Indeed. She's, she's still in Haverhill, but she, she checks in on us often.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Hickey or Mr. Gotti?
No, no questions from me.
Okay, then since the, it was unanimously approved by the AB, the Alcohol Review Committee, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move the select board approve Nicholas Phelps as the manager of record at Del Frisco's Grill, contingent upon alcohol beverages and control commission, ABCC approval, and for the electronic signatures of the select board to be affixed to the ABCC Licensing Authority Certification Board.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Hi.
Mr. Gotti?
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations, Nick. Look forward to seeing you at the restaurants.
Thank you very much. Happy to be part of the community.
Welcome.
Cheers.
And moving along with the theme of the night, we have another new manager. And this one will be at Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza for a change of manager application. So Nora, since you're doing such a great job, we'll let you continue.
One more tonight. So this is a request for the board to approve an application for a change of manager to Nathaniel Dennis. Nathaniel has actually been at the Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza in Westwood since 2017, and he was previously employed in the restaurant industry in various positions since 2014. We again brought this before the Alcohol Review Committee. Query results have been positive. The one difference of this application is that Mr. Dennis currently resides in Warwick, Rhode Island. So as you know, the Westwood Board of Select Board's rules and regulations have a requirement for Massachusetts residency. The Alcohol Review, the Alcohol, Alcohol Beverages Commission does not have that requirement. They simply require that the manager of record be a United States citizen. So Mr. Dennis, Dennis is a United States citizen, but he's currently a resident of Rhode Island. That said, he's hoping to move to Massachusetts at some time in the future. He's saving up to buy a home, but we would, the Alcohol Review Commission is asking that the board greet, grant relief of its own residency requirement to allow, allow this application to move forward. And this request is made especially in light of the very difficult time of finding qualified people to take positions in the food service industry.
Mr. Chairman, we, we talked about this at the Alcohol Review Committee, and, and the feeling was that, that you should allow Mr. Mr. Dennis to become manager of record. You should do it on a contingent basis or a part-time basis in some point in time in the future. Take a hard look at your own regulations. Given, given how difficult it is to find qualified people in the hospitality field right now, we may only be hurting ourselves if we continue with that, with that strict requirement. There was some concern when we first set up the regs about being able to, to serve someone. And, and so that was the reason for it. We, we can routinely reach across state lines if that becomes an issue. I'm not worried about that anymore.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that you, Mr. Hickey and I would agree, it's pretty easy nowadays to reach across state lines. So I understand that it was, why it was put there, but I think especially in light of times right now, we'll just take an early review and see if that, we don't need to address that at some point going forward in the future.
Right.
So, let's see. Mr. Hickey or Mr. Gotti with any questions?
Yeah, I guess, what, what was the logic of the requirement in the, in the first place?
Well, in case there was some kind of problem, if you needed to get someone into court, you wanted, it's easier to get someone into court if they're a Massachusetts resident, if there was some kind of issue that you had to deal with. So we, we had some, some of the strictest rules in the state, and we put that in. Now in 2021, it doesn't look as, as needed as it was years ago, John.
I'm sure Mr. Dullin would be happy to accept service if that was an issue.
I think they were also at the time hoping to avoid any instance where a restaurant was managed remotely by a corporate headquarters. So for instance, Del Frisco's corporate headquarters is in Texas. So we wouldn't want the manager. So we wouldn't want the manager to be residing in Texas and only here virtually or on a intermittent basis. But this manager is right next door in Rhode Island. So we don't see that as a problem.
It's not unusual for people to commute between Rhode Island and Massachusetts.
Well, that's the Providence is forty miles away, forty minutes away, you know. So I don't have a problem, Robbie, okay?
I do not have a problem. I'm very sympathetic, given, you know, all that the industry is going through at this point in time. And so I would be happy to grant this.
But I I mean, but I mean, I I think this is what the proposed action does. None of this is contingent upon him moving. It's just we're granting a waiver.
No.
Right. Okay, I'm good with that. Okay. For the select board to grant relief from the residency requirement in section two, number three of the Westwood Rules and Regulations governing alcoholic beverages and conditionally approved Nathaniel Dennis as the manager of record at Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza upon alcohol beverages and control commission, A B C C approval, with the condition that said approval be reconsidered or under revoked in the event of any punishable violations of policy or law. Also for the board to allow electronic signatures to be affixed to the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission Licensing Authority Certification Form. I would second that.
Hey, Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you Nathaniel. Thank you Libby for joining us. Hope to see you down there and continued success.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's see, moving along now. We have a joint meeting with the select board and the planning board to reappoint associate members. And so I'm guessing the screen is gonna fill out Tish other than just nine.
I'm just I'm just starting.
And Dave.
Welcome Abby. Welcome Dave.
Robbie.
Welcome Kate. Welcome Alan. Welcome Mr. McCusker. Staravsky, thank you for joining us. Two more?
There's no Chris Pat.
Yes, we'll need to bring in their chair.
He's here. Just trying to get him in.
Steve? Both Steves?
Hello there.
Hello.
Waiting for Chris.
There he is.
Now, Mr. Hearn, do they need to open their officially open their meeting of joining us?
They should.
Yeah, Chris.
Chris is holding out the longest.
Ah, he was here and now he's. We lost Chris.
Well, while we're waiting, why don't I give everyone a little preview of coming events? The town charter allows for the appointment of up to two associate members to serve on elected boards, including the planning board. The associate members can be designated by the planning board chair to sit on the board. In the case of absence or the inability to act in a conflict of interest, the associate members will be able to step in. Associate members appointed for three-year terms by a majority of the attending members of the board and the board of select. Charter calls for associate members shall be appointed for three-year rotate rotating terms. So we have the planning board joining us, also four out of five joining us, and we have the two members seeking to be reappointed as associate members.
Excuse me, Tish, Chris is in the waiting. It's one of the ten.
He's back in? Ah, there he is. Okay. Very nice.
Thank you, Tish.
There we go. Welcome, Chris.
Hello, sorry about that.
That's all right. Welcome to the world of Zoom. Technicalities every time you turn around. So Chris, I think you you need to officially open your meeting.
Yeah. So I can only see you, Mike. So we will, at the hour of six thirty-six, we'll open tonight's joint planning board meeting with the select board.
Okay, so we are here at the request to appoint two associate members to the planning board, both of which have served in the past. And these associate members usually sit in the event of a conflict of interest or for some other reason that a regular planning board member cannot be in rotation or hear the issue that's before them. Case of absence or conflict of interest. So did you have a recommendation, Chris?
I believe the recommendation of the planning board would be to reinstate or extend Mr. Raski and Mr. Olonoff as associate members.
Okay, so. Sorry, Chris, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna, I I, as I understand it, those are as we sit right now after and a period of time where it was posted, these are still are two only interested parties that submitted letters of interest. Is that right?
Okay, and so we are allowed to appoint up to three years, and I think rather than continue to do this every year with two and and that kind of leave us with a hole if that happens in the in the future, we are going to appoint one to a two-year term and one to a three-year term. But I believe we need to take a vote. So did you, Chris, want to, is that, did you want to make an official motion from the planning board?
I think that's a great idea, and at this point, I would entertain a motion from members of the planning board for that.
Go move. Second.
Okay.
Point of order.
Yes.
I think you have to identify who's getting the two-year appointment and who's getting the three-year appointment.
We will when we get to the motion. So. So.
So we need a roll on the motion for the planning board?
So what we have, and I'll and I'll spell it out, we have Mr. Olonoff appointed for a two-year term to expire in November of two thousand twenty-three, and Mr. Raski for a three-year term to expire in November of two thousand twenty-four. So based on that, do you want to take a roll call, Chris, of your members, and I will take then of the select board?
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Dave.
Aye.
Ellen.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
Okay, it appears to be unanimous. Gentlemen, careful what you wish for. Congratulations. We thank you all, and Chris, I think now you will need a motion to end your.
Motion to close.
Sorry, sorry, Kate. Say again, please.
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call vote to close. Ellen.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So our meeting is closed.
Thank you very much for joining us. Congratulations gentlemen, and we'll see you back in two years, if not sooner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right. Nora, you seem to have as much to say usually at these meetings as I do. So we have you up next for some local action unit applications for two affordable housing on Washington Street, and I'll let you take it from there.
Sure, I think we have Peter Zaka and Giorgio Petruzziello joining us for this one. So this is a case you received, reviewed, and approved the regulatory agreement for these two units at two fifty-six Washington Street. These units were required by the Islington Center redevelopment project special permit that was approved by the planning board in two thousand eighteen. As you saw, when you approved the regulatory agreement, one unit is a two-bedroom apartment, one is a one-bedroom apartment. They're both on the second, they're ones on the second floor, ones on the third floor of the building in two fifty, two fifty-six Washington Street. That's the former ski stop building. It now has Islington Barber in it. And so this application, we sent the redevelopment agreement on to the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they immediately notified us that before they can move forward and sign that, they need a local action unit application. So the application contains not only the regulatory agreement, but it contains a copy of the decision from the planning board approving these units. It includes information on the the property owner, the developer, and his rights to sign his articles of incorporation, information like that. It also includes an affirmative fair marketing housing lottery program. So a a plan to to advertise the units available for rental and to have a lottery to to fill those units. We received a copy of that affirmative action plan from the developer and from from Mr. Zaka. Unfortunately, it had a lot of errors in it from the marketing agent that need to be corrected. So I've marked up a copy. And I think I think we have all the errors. We know what they are. We know what needs to be fixed. There was just a little confusion of whether they were condos or rental units. They are clearly rental units. A little bit of the language was mixed up. So we'd like to get that corrected and resubmitted. The problem was that the the company Maloney was not able to make the changes today. So I don't have the final document to show you. And so what I'm requesting tonight is that the board consider granting the chair the authorization to sign the document once it's been corrected. That said, if you don't feel comfortable doing that, you can bring this back at your December sixth meeting and consider it then, at which time we'll have the fully revised document. But doing so will delay the the lottery process. Right now, the lottery process is scheduled to begin on December first and has to continue for a sixty-day period. In addition, if we put it off till December sixth, the other thing that will be delayed is the sale of any of the condo units in the mixed-use building on Washington Street. We can't grant a certificate of occupancy for those units until we have a recorded regulatory agreement. We can't record the regulatory agreement until it's signed by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they will not sign it until they have this local action unit application. So, you know, everything is kind of tied together.
So if we don't sign tonight, delay, delay, delay.
It will it will be, yes, it will be a series of delays. I'll also mention that the Housing Partnership is set tomorrow to review the same application you're reviewing. The chair of the Housing Partnership also has to sign the local action unit application for submission to D H C D.
So I would be okay with doing it, especially if Mr. Hearn has an opportunity to review it prior to my signing it. But I'll leave that up to you, just John and Rob. That's, you know, part of your decision as well.
I'm fine. This is this is all ministerial. This is not substantive.
Right.
Mr. Hickey, and I have not had a chance to review. I've seen Nora's markup, as I've seen many of Nora's markups, and at at a very quick glance, it looked very thorough, but I would like a chance to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. And I'll let you know if I've got any concerns, and we'll protect the town as much as we can, as to the best of our ability moving forward.
Yeah, I'm fine, Robbie, you okay?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the only thing that I was looking at was the proposed pricing on those things. What's the what's the current fair market on a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom? Because that, is it is that supposed to be, you know, percentage of?
So the 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 market, the market rates are not what set the the affordable rates. The affordable rates are set based on the adjusted gross income of eligible residents. So the HUD sets income qualification guidelines on an annual basis. And then the rent is based on what a person earning that income could afford to pay. So in this case, the the rental rate, I actually don't have the rates in front of me. I think it's about seventeen hundred for a one-bedroom and just over two thousand for a two-bedroom. Giorgio, correct me if I have those numbers wrong.
Yeah, we have fifteen sixty-four for a one-bedroom and two thousand thirteen for two.
For a two-bedroom.
That's right.
That's right. So those are those are twenty twenty-one rents based on the twenty twenty-one adjusted gross income requirements for affordable units in our area, the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy, M S A. So those will change in in two thousand twenty-two, but those are the current.
Those those are set off of, okay, that's fine.
Those are about a state, Rob, but we don't get too much much discretion.
And and those are the same rates. You recently approved a local action unit application for Waha units. There were that were, one was a two-bedroom, was a three-bedroom, and they use the same qualifications for their rental rates.
Okay. No other question.
So John, did you want to just include that Pat has an opportunity to review it prior to my signing it?
Good. So I move the select would authorize the select board chair, Michael Walsh, to sign the local action unit application for two affordable housing units located on Washington Street. The application to be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for approval, subject to town council's approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And we will keep the procedure moving, keep things on track so that people are in their apartments sooner than later. Thank you, Nora.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Attorney Zaka, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize. I'm sitting in my car outside of the town meeting, but thank you. I want to thank Nora for spending the time going over that. There's a lot of boilerplate that ended up in there that shouldn't have been in there, but thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the Gettum Westwood Water District drinking water violation. So it's to provide an update to us on the Gettum Westwood Water District, a violation issued on October seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Hearn, I believe that you wanted to take some of the lead on this and try to explain it in, if you can, in layman's terms as to what's happening.
Well, I I'm going to let the Water District tell you what happened, because they certainly know more thoroughly than I, so.
Yeah, so Blake is new to the job. Welcome Blake. I don't think we've had the opportunity to meet yet. And you are welcome to fill us in, or I know that there's a marketing firm that's out there, as well as we have Mr. Salian, who's part of our our crew.
So if it's all right, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I guess, first introduce myself, and then I'll be running through a quick presentation before we open it up for some questions. So again, my name is Blake Lucas. I'm the new executive director of the Denim Westwood Water District. I'd also like to thank you for inviting us here tonight to provide this update on the tri-hellamethane, also known as T H M for short, exceedance, and obviously answer any questions that you may have for us. So I said I put together a brief presentation, and what I figured I would do is just run through the presentation, which includes a quick update, something that we provided the communities just last week on the tenth, and then also a timeline of our communication about the exceedance, and then a quick timeframe of our corrective actions taken today. Then after that, I figured that we could open it up for for questions. So with that, I will share my presentation. I'm assuming you can all see my screen at this point?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So again, these first couple of slides are just a word-for-word update that we provided to both communities back last week on the tenth. It provides a little bit of information about about the drinking water, the fact that we are in exceedance of a regulatory standard. It is a secondary standard, which means that it's a tier-two violation, which requires per masti E P and E P A a thirty-day notification to all our consumers. It is not an emergency situation. And as we've informed everyone, it's not an issue where, you know, we need to find a an alternate source of water. So why did this happen? Again, we sample regularly for many different secondary and primary contaminants in our water system. This is just regular quarterly sampling that we provide. And unfortunately, due to some, you know, adverse weather that we had over the summer, we believe that was a direct impact to why we are seeing such an elevated level of T H Ms, and what prompted the the exceedance of the drinking water standard. and what prompted the the exceedance of the drinking water standard. So what I'd like to do is really focus on this page, because I know that some of the informations about, you know, how often we sample and where we sample. So this chart was provided to both communities through our communication, our letter to the Board of Selectman and the Town and Town Manager and Town Administrator. It was also included in the public outreach last week so that we could share the actual results that we received at all of our sample locations throughout the course of the past year. So a- as previously stated, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, so they oversee our compliance for all federal and state drinking water standards. Sampling for trihalomethanes is required on a quarterly basis, so specifically during the first week of January, April, July and October. Those are the weeks that we actually have to perform the regulatory sampling. So I stated this chart shows what our sampling results were for these four specific sampling timeframes at the four different locations throughout the distribution system in each community that we sample. And as you can see throughout the course of the year, these numbers do vary from site to site and throughout the different times of year. Now, for compliance purposes, the standard is based on what they call the locational running annual average or L R A A for short. So this is what you see on the right most column in blue. This is what D E P looks at to ensure or determine whether or not we're in compliance. And you will see in this chart, the far reach pump station sampling location is where we exceeded the compliance of eighty parts per billion within number of eighty three. Each quarter, when we sample, the L R A A is calculated using the most recent sampling results along with the four, I'm sorry, the three most previous sample results in order to make that calculation. And I think one of the reasons why I wanted to highlight this, because that high number that you see in the October sampling, that number is going to be included in our next L R A A calculation when we perform the next round of sampling in the first week of January, two thousand and twenty two. If through that sampling, we still are in exceedance through the L R A A at any of these locations, we will in fact have to provide the same notification to both communities and all of our residents, all of our customers just as we did this time around. So I just want to be proactive in that statement and that there's an understanding that if if we have to provide public notification again, it's not a a new noncompliance. It will be that we are continued to be in noncompliance. However, as I will get into, we have started to do certain things to help reduce our T H Ms within our distribution system. So with that, oh, I'm sorry. So, you know, although we are sharing all of these results with you now, because we are in exceedance, I did want to point out that all of this information, so all of our, the range in which we sample and our results for T H Ms and all of our other drinking water standards are provided to all of our customers on an annual basis. And that's through our water, annual water quality report. That's mailed out every June to all of our customers and provided to all the the town departments as well. All of that information, and I'd say at least goes back a decade, if not more, of annual water quality reports is on our website. There's a, on the left hand side, an annual water quality section, and you can look there and you can see all of our historic sampling results, at least the ranges in which we've sampled in. So I don't, I, you know, just want to point out that all this information is provided on an annual basis basis and it's not just being provided here tonight because we're in exceedance. So now with that, I'd like to run through just the timeframe for communication on the exceedance. Uh, so as mentioned, the first week in October is when we are required to do our quarterly sampling. Um, I think we specifically sampled on October seventh this year, and that's when we brought it to the lab, so they could begin their analysis. On the fifteenth is when we received verbal notifications from the laboratory that we were in exceedance of the L R A A at one of our sampling locations. On October eighteenth, we, as we needed to, notified Mass D E P that we were in noncompliance at one location. On the twenty fifth is when we actually received, so what the state does when you are in exceedance of a drinking water standard, they provide a notice of noncompliance. So it was October twenty fifth that we actually received that written notice of noncompliance that outlined some steps that we had to take, including public outreach corrective action. On October twenty eighth, the district sent the tier two public notification to Mass D E P for approval. So that notification that we sent out to all of our customers, that's something that we need to put together, submit to D E P for approval prior to being able to send it out to the residents and customers. They had a pretty quick turnaround on the ninth, twenty ninth is when we actually received their approval and we were able to send it to the printer to begin processing it and getting it out. So on the twenty ninth, once we received the approval, we began our outreach to the two different communities. We tried just in verbal conversations to reach out to both the Town Manager of Denham and the Town Administrator in Westwood. We were able to speak with Mr. Godwin over in Denham, and I believe the message was left for yourself, Mr. Coleman, and then we were able to receive you a couple of days later after the weekend. So on the thirty first, the water quality hotline and email address, they were procured and activated to deal with all of the customers' calls and questions that we knew would arise from this exceedance. On Monday, the number first is when we were actually able to speak to Mr. Coleman and bring him up to speed verbally on what had happened. And then November fourth is when everything went out public. We launched our, I believe that's when all the mailings began to go out, the bulk mailings, that is. We had Zoom meetings with both towns and town officials. We distributed the tier two notification on both select boards and Board of Health. We launched a new web, a portion of our webpage dedicated to T T H Ms. We shared notices on the two different towns' websites and we put together a press release. The next day, November fifth, we could tell that the mailings had been received. We started to get our first calls into the hotline. On the eighth, we began to get some emails, asking some questions. And then the last part of this timeline is just reiterating that our next sampling will be in the first week of twenty, January, twenty twenty two. And we are hoping that we will see a significant reduction and hoping that we are are back in compliance, but you know, everything that we're doing so far, we are starting to see a turn in the right direction, but obviously we need to have a specific number to be in compliance. So the still last slide, last couple of slides here, this is some of the, some of the stuff that we've been doing. Action items to correct the issue. So on the twenty first of October, we began blending our water that we have through our treatment plants with the M W R A to try to dilute the T H Ms and reduce them in our distribution system. On the twenty second, we requested an ad in the local play paper notifying residents that we would be performing hydrant flushing to help flush and get the older water out of our system and bring fresh water into it. On the twenty ninth, we took samples at Fox Hill Road Storage Tanks and we brought them to the laboratory for testing. This is where we were bringing blended M W R A water in. So after seven days, eight days, we wanted to see what our numbers looked like after a week of blending water. On the first, we started conventional flushing in selected areas and dead ends throughout both towns. That is still ongoing. And again, that is to turn the water over in the system, reduce the water age within our system, which inherently will reduce the T H Ms in our system. On the ninth, we actually received the sample results from the Fox Hill Road Storage Tanks. And we did see a reduction in one tank. It was about fifty percent reduction and on the second tank, it was about a thirty four percent reduction. So we are seeing positive movement in the right direction. Um, so I do have some, some of our consultants here with us as well as one of our commissioners. We have Weston and Sampson. They'll be available if we have any specific questions. They, they are working with us as experts in water treatment and working with us to try to both in the distribution system and long term potentially at our treatment facilities. Part of that is looking at ways of reducing the water age. Like I said, you know, flushing in the system, putting automatic flushes in very specific areas to try to keep the water fresh. And then also, like I said, including information or equipment in our treatment plants to try to reduce organic matter, which when combined with the chlorine is what causes the disinfection byproducts. I think that is all I have. So at this point, unless Gary or Steve, you have anything specific you'd like to say, I'd be more than happy to open it up for questions.
I have a question, Michael.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Can you, can you expand a little more on the blending of the M W R A water? So if you bring M W R A water in, but you're only seeing a thirty four percent reduction in the T H Ms, could you bring in more M W R A water? Which doesn't have any?
So I, I can't say that M W R A water doesn't have any. So they have a lower T H M than our water at this point, but they also have a diff- different disinfection byproduct, H A A's, haliosic acids, and that's because they have chloraminated water and not chlorinated water. So they still have a similar byproduct that's inherent for disinfecting water. So it's, it's kind of a trying to strike a balancing point here. And, you know, there's also hydraulics, you know, making sure that we're balancing and bringing, you know, keeping our water pressure up and bringing the right amount of water into our system. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I mean, I guess, but I guess, you know, my other point is, my other question is, I mean, what, what is it we're saying to residents? Like the water is safe and use it, boil the water, let your kids drink the water, like what's the bottom line?
The, the D E P has approved that and they actually used the wording that Blake used earlier that the water, this is not an emergency, the water is safe to drink. There are immune deficiency, if, you know, if people have immune deficiencies, they need to talk to their doctor. There are some people that, you know, should rely on their expertise because there's not enough data to actually know exactly how it would affect some people. Everyone's different, you know, genetic makeup is different in every people and they need to find out specifically if, if there's any issues with them personally.
So my question is, so now you've seen that this has happened, you, you review it and, you know, four times a year. Is there any plan to start evaluating a lot more or a lot sooner than the quarters?
So we actually have begun that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I believe back in May of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one, we began a monthly, monthly sampling of T H Ms, both at, and T O C is total organic carbon, which is again, the organics with the chlorine in the water, what caused the disinfection byproducts. So we've been sampling both of those on a monthly basis at a lot of our sources and out in the distribution system. So it's something that we had actively been looking into and monitoring to ensure that we come forward with a, you know, a plan to try to reduce it long term.
Because when I look at your, you know, your first, your quarter one through quarter four, it's somewhat alarming that the Denham Medical Association said it went from forty and pretty steadily up to one eighteen during that time period. And then the same with the Far Reach Pump Station, it went from seventy four up to one hundred and nine. And at least as far as July, you were tipped off that something is wrong because you're over eighty nine at that point in time.
Yep. And I believe last year, our, in calendar year two thousand and twenty, our highest sample was ninety seven. So, you know, we, seeing an increase between April and July is normal. We typically see our highest number in our October reading. That's because of the summer months. Typically, we have higher organics in the water. And, and this isn't just in Denham and Westwood, this is across the Commonwealth. You see higher organics during the summertime and which requires you to increase your chlorine volume that you're adding to the water to combat that, to make sure that you have a residual out in your system. So the higher organics, the higher chlorine feed you typically need, which inherently increases your T H Ms.
So if, if you were saying this was due to sort of a confluence of environmental conditions this year, what was it specifically about or can you elaborate on what the combination of the record temperatures and the, and the rainfall did contribute to this?
So the, it's a combination of both, but I think it's really the rainfall. So the high intensity rain events that we saw is significantly increased organic matter in the soil, which gets down into our wells and into our aquifers. And this is not something that was just unique to the district. The M W R A was seeing the same issue. We, they had significant drop in chlorine residuals because of organics in their system as well. And it's the heavy rainfall that causes the organics, the increased organics. And that record rainfall that we had in, over the summer, specifically in August, really pushed a lot of organic matter. And we had to increase our chlorine residual or chlorine feed to combat that.
When you take those measurements, right, are you looking at just the absolute number? Are you looking at, you know, trend, right? Because it sounded like in answer to Michael's question, you've increased the frequency to monthly of the sampling. So, I mean, is this something that you saw and could have started the blending any earlier on to avoid the the exceedance?
Again, so we did see an increase in our monthly sampling. However, we did not see it to the point of any higher than we thought we would have been in previous years. So that one hundred and nine that you referenced, so Denham Medical Associates and Far Reach Pump Station sampling locations, those are significantly higher than the highest the district has ever seen at those locations. I think the one eighteen is somewhere around thirty percent higher than we've ever sampled before at that location. So we saw significant jumps that we did not see through our September sampling. If I believe if we were to have used our September sampling, which wouldn't be allowed by D E P, you have to do it the specific timeframes they know, we would not have been in exceedance.
And so does that, you know, what Mr. Locke said earlier in terms of people who may need to, you know, be more concerned with any compromised immune systems, but your announcement also included infants and pregnant women. How concerned that they should, should they be that, you know, we're hitting something that's thirty percent over what we've ever seen before?
I think that if they need to get an idea of how concerned that they should be, they need to contact their, their doctors or their medical professionals that, you know, are, that unfortunately, we can't, we can't speak to, to the impact of them. The one thing I will say, and it is in this update, is that, you know, the the compliance number of eighty parts per billion is based on a lifetime exposure. So being over the eighty parts per billion for a short time period is not make the water unsafe and that's why it's not inherently an emergency as far as D E P and E P A are concerned. It's a lifetime exposure limit.
Is it just drinking or do you need to be concerned about, you know, bathing, washing dishes, anything else? What, I mean, what things would be somebody be concerned about?
So I think it's any use of the water. So consumption is clearly one of them. Taking a shower, but also, you know, making sure that that fan is running to, to pull the fumes up through the, the exhaust fan while you're showering. And we're using the, the vent hood while you're, you're boiling water or cooking.
Okay. Could you throw back the, the table that you, you had in your presentation? Thanks. Can you comment on what's the uniqueness of the East Denham Fire Station site? Because they didn't have any of the bump that you see in Q four at the other stations. And I imagine when you get to your January reading this year, you're going to see exceedance likely in both of the other two stations, just given the height of those numbers. So what was it? What can we learn from what's going on in, in East Denham? Because their weather wasn't that different. So what was it? What can we learn from what's going on in, in East Dedham? Because their weather wasn't that different.
If, if I could, Mr. Goddard, one of the things that we did, we started earlier this year, we hired Weston and Sampson to assist us. We did a a water age study and a source tracing study. Because to get to the root of the problem, we need to know, identify exactly where it is. And in the Dedham-Westwood Water District, there are two systems, there's a Dedham Main and a Westwood High. And those two systems are fed from both plants. So there's, it's like a web. So one areas may get water from one area or one plant and may not from the other. So we were doing the source tracing study to find out, or one of the reasons, one of the things we could find out is if we had numbers like this, it would help us identify the problem and where that problem is coming from. We have had through the studies that we've had through six months, Weston and Sampson is just starting to analyze that. It was a twelve month study. We started a long time ago, well, six months ago, we finally got the October results in. And that is one of the, the things, it was an excellent question. I was looking at it when I first saw this, and, and it sticks out like a thumb. I think that, you know, sort of thumb, but I think that will be one of the key factors in finding a treatment technique at the plant. To, to answer your question specifically, and it's too early to say this one hundred percent sure, but it does indicate that the Westwood High Service seems to have less organics and less T, consequently, less THMs. Henceforth, more than likely, the problem is at Bridge Street, which both, like I say, both plants feed the Westwood High Service. They also feed those two areas in question, the Dedham Medical and Far Reach Road, which are also dead-ended areas. They're both dead-ended in, in the system. So those culmination of facts kind of identify to us where to spend the long-term money, if you will, to correct the problem at the source. In the interim, as Blake had suggested earlier, we plan to reduce the THMs at the tank through mixers, vents, and aeration. That will knock the numbers down in compliance. And until we can get a treatment technique solution, which, you know, you have to go through the DEP, a whole process, you got to find out what specific treatment technique you can use. And, you know, all the design and engineering factors that go along with it, that Weston and Sampson could possibly answer, but I hope that answered your question anyway.
Blake, can I ask you to stop sharing your screen? Just so people can get a better idea.
If I, if I made the, the comment you made, Steve, on dead endings, so stagnant water is something that we want to avoid. So once we keep water moving, that helps reduce, excuse me, the THMs. So that, having those dead-ended areas makes that prone to a higher THM. That's why we do the hydrogen flushing, and we try to keep the water moving. With the amount of rain that we've had, people water, using less water, it increased that stagnation.
That's a hundred percent correct. That's why we're looking at the auto flushers. And, you know, going down the road a little, we're actually, we're in the process of trying to connect Schoolmaster Lane, which could connect those two areas, which would improve water quality, and we believe THMs to a certain degree too, in both areas, but that takes time to, to get that process completed. But we are, we've been looking at that all year long. In fact, I, you know, I'm counting this, we're going to have like five or five projects ongoing on this. So we did know that we wanted to reduce those THMs, but the extraordinary events of this year, the excessive precipitation and the high temperatures, that is, you know, it's like a perfect storm to create THMs through the, mostly the high organics.
So I see that one of our attendees has his hand raised, and if you would be kind enough to type this question into the question and answer, we'll address that as soon as a, a question is typed in. You know, a question, I'm sure a question that everyone has is, okay, when you go to a water flushing and things like that, does that cause the price of water to go up for our residents in both Westwood and Dedham because we're wasting that water just to clean out the dead ends?
It's a necessary evil. Yes, it does. I mean, you, you are wasting it, but every water system, you know, in the United States does it. You, you know, it does waste water, but, you know, there are good, there's reasons for it. You want to get off tuberculosis inside the pipes, biofilms, you, you're getting rid of organics. And, and you're cleaning the water. And as Gary had just mentioned, in dead ends, you want to move that water. You don't want it sitting there because, you know, taste odor problems, plus the fact that THMs are created, you know, through water age, which is again, one of the reasons we did a water age study with Weston and Sampson earlier this year, already completed. I don't know exactly offhand, the whole year's been kind of a blur, but I'd say, say March, maybe April.
So can I ask you a question? So when you do all this flushing, right, in other words, how do you know that it's really productive? Are you sampling the water out of the flushings to find out if that in fact is where part of the, the THMs are coming from?
No, no, it's, it's just a matter of sampling after. We actually sampled once earlier this year to, to test the theory of whether it reduces it or not specifically in a short period of time, and it most definitely does. The only thing that I can tell you this time, when we did the study on, on water age, that, you know, it's about a seven to ten, seven and ten day period that the water remains in the pipe. You can't be flushing every seven to ten days. So flushing is not in and in itself the answer.
No, but it sounds like there's probably some environmental factors, because it sounds like what you guys are talking about is the water age means you need to move it through the pipes in order to prevent the buildup of these environmentals, right, or the bios. So I guess this summer, with all of that rain, there's a whole lot of people not needing to water lawns and things like that, that would have in the past during this time period moved water through. Is that a reasonable?
And, you know, just to also, if I may, answer a little bit about the cost of flushing water. I mean, it's an inherent cost of a water utility. As Steve had mentioned, that all water utilities do it, the district does it twice a year to not only, it's not just done to, to turn over water as we are doing it. For the, that's the purpose we're doing it right now, but it's also done to clean water mains, to get the biofilm out and, you know, get any sediment that may be in the water mains. So it's, there's, there's many different reasons for flushing, and it's inherent cost in the, in this, in the budget.
Given to the, to the monthly testing, will that be something that you start to publish on the website? And, you know, I know you're required to do it on a quarterly basis, but now that you're doing it on the monthly basis, is that something you'll be, you know, watching trend for and things like that? Because it seems like if you've got that data, it's, it's helpful for the public to be able to access it.
All right, Mr. Coleman, you have something you'd like to? Do you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Blake, if you can, the slide that you were showing with the quarters, quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four, if I, if I understood you correctly, you said that in January, March timeframe, you're going to, the district will have to do another set of testing. And we're going to be using or keeping the quarter four numbers?
Yes.
So can you just explain how that's going to work?
Sure. So essentially, you take, we will take our April twenty-one sample, our July twenty-one sample, our October twenty-one sample, and then add in our January twenty-two sample to get our local, locational, running annual average.
So our average is below eighty parts per billion after your quarter one sample? What happens?
We are in compliance and nothing happens. We just continue to, to move on until our next quarterly sampling. That said, that doesn't mean we're going to change course on anything that we've already started. So we'll continue to, to, to perform our monthly sampling and move towards the more immediate corrective action, which is turning the water over in our tanks through mixers and then power ventilation and potentially aerators to help reduce it. So in the long term, we don't see an, an exceedance in the future.
So just as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, if I may, so Blake, thank you for that. So after you do your quarter one testing, if the results are favorable and the average is less than eighty parts per billion, the district will continue doing what it's doing. Is there, so is there a timeframe on the work that you're doing? So the public understands that, is this a, a three-month process? Is this a longer period process, regardless of the testing and the results?
Sure. So, you know, at, at this point, it becomes a a design and then a procurement process. So, you know, we do have money that we're putting forth in our capital budget for next year. So assuming that we, you know, get the necessary funding to implement what it is we want to move forward with, and then we can go through the procurement process. I'm hoping that we could have it done within six to nine months.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. John or Rob, anything else? I'm, there is one question, but I'm asking for a...
I got one last one, and it's just for, you know, the public's benefit, right? With the, the fact that, Chris, you're highlighting it's a moving average. Blake, I imagine you're not expecting to get under the eighty parts per billion as an average, because you've got, and two other sites where you're going to have significant bubbles through that holes that you're going to have to hold on to for, you know, the next three readings.
That's correct. So we are hopeful that we can get it down, especially if we're able to implement something within our tanks, you know, if we happen to get on the earlier side in six months, then we could potentially see something before our July sampling. But you, you're absolutely correct, that one eighteen and one oh nine at Denham Medical and Far Reach Pump Station, those stay through our, our sampling and our averages for the next four samples, yes.
You, you probably did notice as well on those charts that it is seasonal in October, always being our highest number, excuse me, is because that incorporates July, August, and September. Consequently, you know, adversely, January tends to be our lower numbers, but you know, because of the high number, it, it makes it challenging to reach that LRAA. But there is a possibility we can do it.
So, Mr. Chair, what's another follow-up on that? So as far as your quarter one numbers for twenty twenty-one, were those typical numbers that the district has received in prior years? Were they higher numbers or lower numbers? Because I'm looking at, if they were higher numbers, there's a chance that if you go to your average, you may be able to reduce your parts per billion by three, thus becoming within the DEP requirements.
Yeah, I don't know, Steve, if you have the sampling numbers in front of you to be able to determine whether or not those are average or not, I could try to pull them up really quick.
The, maybe I didn't understand that. Are you talking the January sampling?
Yes. So is your, your January sampling from twenty-one, is that a, a typical reading that the district has received in years past? Is that a higher reading or a lower reading?
It's, it's a little lower, actually. It's a little lower than average.
But that only compounds the problem for your average going forward, because that means it's going to have to be lower than that still this January in order to bring your number down.
Right.
So I have a question.
Well, no, it'll be, it'll be eliminated, you know, that, that lower number from last January is eliminated, you know.
Correct, which would then only drive your average higher if you, if you remain higher that this January. That's what I'm saying.
Correct. But if we, I guess the point that I'm making, if we could produce that number again, we'd be in, if, we'd be in compliance.
So question.
At one location.
Going forward.
At the one location, that's true, that's true.
Going forward, gentlemen, and you may have to defer to Nicole on this. You know, what, what kind of reforms are you going to put in place communicating with the public now that they're receiving their emails and they're watching this on television? Well, some of them will be, to find out about this. What, what kind of communications do you have for the residents of Denham and Westwood moving forward?
So we've set up the eight hundred hotline, the one eight hundred two seven nine eight eight one zero hotline for residents to call in. We also have a dedicated email address called waterquality@dedhamwestwood, excuse me, at D W W D dot org. So that they can email their questions, and we've spent quite a bit of time speaking to residents in the last week since we notified the public. And we will issue press releases as we have, as conditions change and updates as well. So, and we continue to communicate with the towns of Dedham and Westwood, asking them to share the information. We've been using social media as well to get it out there.
Mr. Chair, can I just share one more, some feedback that we've heard from residents in this office?
Yes.
So in, in, thank you. In regards to the notification you sent out to residents and customers, we certainly, we certainly appreciate it. Some of the feedback is, some residents thought it was a bill because it looks just like the bill. If there's a way future correspondence that goes out to residents could be clearly identified as updated information and not so much as a bill, I think that would be appreciated.
We could certainly adjust the format and the layout. We'll work with Blake and his team to adjust that notification. It has to come out as an official notification of the tier two from the Water District as part of the DEP's notification plan. But in the future, the updates will look more like what we just posted on the website, so it doesn't look so much like a bill, and it's more of an update to the situation. But I appreciate the feedback.
Okay. Anyone else? John, Rob, anything?
Mr. Chairman, you have a question in the Q and A.
Let's see. Yeah, I said it, but it's not on topic this evening, so I'm going to explain to the resident that's not, that's not, the question that's being asked is not really what we're discussing this evening. So I will hold off on that question until we have further discussion. Seeing nothing else. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us, and Nicole, thank you for joining us. Hopefully, you don't have to come back again.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having us.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, moving along to our new business. We have the town tax collector open position. So, Mr. Coleman, I'm going to ask you to take the lead on this one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the board is aware, our elected tax collector has moved out of the town, thus creating a vacancy, a temporary vacancy until the next election. The board has, what I see is three options to fill that temporary position. We did post a position. We do have two candidates for the board's consideration. The board at its, one of its early meetings decided to wait and to see how many applicants we did receive before it was, the board decided on the process going forward. Just to remind the board, the last time the board discussed an elected position to fill, to appoint a temporary person to fill that elected position, that was a interview that was conducted during the select board's public meetings. We have a couple of other options for the board to consider as well as that one. If the board wanted to identify a board member to conduct the interviews and come back to the board with a recommendation, or if the board wanted staff to conduct interviews and come back to the board with a recommendation. Those are the three options that I currently see. There may be some others out there. But those are the, the three that just wanted to discuss with the board this evening.
My, my original thought process was, and John and Rob, you're welcome to weigh in. My thought process was that we would have you, perhaps Pam, and maybe anyone else, Chris, that you think would be important to interview the two candidates and come back with a recommendation to us. Not that we have to accept your recommendation, but I think at least you could give us some insight between you and the Assistant Town Administrator, and then let us know what you think is the next possible steps to take. John, Rob, are you weighing on those?
Yeah, I mean, I guess for me, you know, I think it's just a critical role, and I, you know, we're talking about a difference of between now and April. And I'm not, so I don't want to process this to death. You know, I've looked at the two resumes. You know, I have a longstanding relationship with the Willzy Alcos. I think Joe's great. I don't know that I'm going to hear anything that's going to change my opinion.
I don't know that I'm gonna hear anything that's gonna change my opinion that, that would have me not. Support his candidacy for the temporary position. So, I, I just.
I was figuring we would have it for our next meeting. On December sixth, not, not putting off till April, no, not by any means.
I'm comfortable with the process that you laid out, Michael, I would, I'd be fine with Chris and, you know, um, Pam and whomever else. As part of the, the staff, come back.
I like an odd number, just in case there's a, a two to one vote, you know, but it happens, you know how that goes, Rob.
Yep.
And that way, you guys can have a recommendation for us, and, and if, John, if it doesn't change your mind, and, and then so be it, but anyway, I think at least. That gives an, an opportunity rather than do it on television, and, you know, and do it that way, and then we can make a decision on December sixth.
Well, I mean, we've done these before an open session.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest with you, John, I'm not comfortable to put anybody on TV and then kind of vote in front of them at the same time. I'd like the, the interview process to be uh, one that's not live on television, and if you, we choose afterwards, once we have the recommendation, we can still do that. But I just think it's a little bit awkward to be doing it on live television, I don't know, it's, it's just been odd for me to do it that way.
But are you gonna ask staff to recount the interviews and give their recommendation live?
Um, we'll have Chris just do it live, Chris can run, you know, I'm not asking for Chris, Pam and whoever else is on the thing to come in live, we'll take. Uh, Mr. Coleman's uh, word as to what the, the panel decided or, or the group decided, and then give it to us then. Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I'll defer to the two of you, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I think we're over processing it, but it sounds like that's the path you guys wanna go, so. I, I just don't love, I just don't love, I'm, I'm kinda with Michael, I, I love the, the, you know. When we've done it before for the planning board temporary appointments and things like that, where we have a whole bunch of people come in. And we ask them, you know, basically to each answer the same question, it's not a real interview, I'd rather have, you know. Somebody conduct a real interview and, and, you know, do some vetting and then come back with a recommendation, I just, I think that's. The, uh, process that serves people better, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think we need any uh, motion on that, but we've given you guidance, Mr. Coleman, you'll have our, our recommendation for us by our next meeting.
All right, Claire.
Okay. You okay with that, John, Rob?
Sure.
Okay. So, next, uh, it looks like almost last on our agenda this evening is the review of select board meeting dates. You guys have a chance to look at the schedule at all?
I did.
Our next meeting is, of course, in December sixth. And then we have a second one in December, Chris, Trish.
December twentieth.
Yeah. So then, after that, rounding out the new year, we would have uh, December tenth, although, I mean, January tenth, although it looks like. Chris has a conflict.
I am likely to have a conflict on that one too, but I also know that we have the, the warrant that needs to close, so I don't know. Cannot be pushed, could we do the second, the eleventh?
So, yeah, so that was my question, Chris, is it just that one night for you?
It, it's just the one night, and it's, it's, for me, it's just um, coming back from, uh, traveling back to Westwood for the in person portion.
Okay, I'm okay with the eleventh, John, is that okay with you, will you move it to Tuesday?
Hold on, so January eleventh?
Yes.
Instead of the tenth?
So, tenth.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so Tish, there's a fresh change file. Okay.
Thank you.
I know the plan of what's meeting on the eleventh, I don't think you'll have a conflict, but just to let you know.
Okay. So then, we will be meeting uh, on the eighteenth at the FinCon, or at least I will. And then, um, you have the select board, next is the twenty fourth, that's okay, John, and Rob?
I'm good there.
January twenty fourth, okay. February seventh. We'll take the, the seventh and possibly the eighth for me as well, so. Um, John, are you planning any uh, vacation for the February school vacation, for you and your family?
I'm, I'm around.
Okay. So right now, it looks like the next one would be during the February vacation on Tuesday, cuz Monday's the President's Day. So Tuesday, the twenty second.
That one may be a prob, that one may be a problem for me.
Okay, is it the whole week, Rob, or just a day?
Yeah, unfortunately, that one's the whole week, I mean, I guess I could, you know, do it remotely, though.
Uh, let's see. Do the twenty eighth and then the first.
Yeah, move it to the following week.
Yeah, all right, there you go, Tish, we're moving the next one.
Then you'll have back to back.
That's okay.
Okay, because the next day will be FinCon. On March first.
Yeah, well, we might not need to, you know, we could take that off if we finish everything the night before.
And I will have a conference on the twenty eighth, but that's fine.
You have a conflict?
I'm gonna be away that week, but. That's fine, and then potentially in the first meeting prior to FinCon, so you'd have the back to back.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you know, if we get everything done on the twenty eighth, then we may not meet, meet on the first.
Right, but that'll be the first public hearing, so you'll still be attending anyways.
I will still be attending, yes. Okay, and then the fourteenth of March, that's okay?
Yeah.
And then, uh, on twenty ninth, cuz we'll go back to FinCon for the public, final public hearing. And we have April fourth. My guess is, and I'll leave this up to John and, and Rob too, my guess is we go the fourth and then the eleventh. And then we should be ready for town meeting and not have to meet. On the eighteenth, the week of the eighteenth school vacation, or the week of the twenty fifth. We could actually meet before town meeting, if there's anything necessary.
I'm around two location weeks, so it doesn't matter to me.
You wanna go back to back weeks in April then?
Yes, the fourth and the eleventh. Cuz then we run it to Easter, and I'll, and run it to the town election.
And we can also revisit as we get closer.
And then we'll do this, the, obviously, we have town meeting on the second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just under the current um, authorization from the governor. Uh, your April fourth meeting would have to be fully in person unless there's a change.
Yes, both the fourth and the eleventh would have to be.
Beginning on the fourth, it would have to be one or center.
Correct.
Okay.
In fact, every meeting after that will have to be last.
That is correct, unless there's a change.
And then we're meeting just on the ninth for reorganization.
We'll start at the twenty third.
Chris, is, is the continuation being discussed still, cuz I think this has actually opened up participation for folks.
Uh, it, my understanding, it has been discussed, but there's nothing um, official that has come out from the governor's office yet.
No, it has been batted around a little bit in the M M L A circles. Uh, but I absolutely agree with Mr. Coleman, there's nothing definitive, and if you recall. We waited till the eleventh hour last time to get a continuance, so.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so then, the ninth, we'll just meet a, a quick reorganization. And then our next real meeting will be the twenty third of May. And then I think we can leave it up to the new chair at that point in time to decide the. The schedule, we'll only go till the ninth till we reorg.
Okay.
We'll leave it, we'll leave the twenty third on tentatively, but that way we'll. And we'll let Rob set the pace then. Okay? All right.
Do you, meeting minutes?
Just a quick question.
We have two meetings.
Mr. Chair, can I just have one quick question regarding your December sixth meeting, the start time for that? Is that gonna be seven P M, or is that gonna be at six P M?
Yeah, we're back live in person, would have to be at seven.
Okay, thank you.
Cuz uh, Mr. Guardian and Mistakey may have to get home from in town. And it's not.
Okay.
Sitting at the select board meetings, we want them to be able to have something to eat, we don't want them hungry at the meeting.
Uh, okay, I, I move that we accept the meeting minutes from October twelfth, twenty twenty one, and October twenty seventh, twenty twenty one as presented.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Hickey.
Hi.
Mr. Gotti.
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, our next meeting is presently scheduled for Monday, December sixth. We're gonna try a hybrid, but you know, we have no guarantees. Uh, we could be right back here on Zoom, just like we are now. Uh, it's scheduled for Monday, December sixth at seven P M, as it is right now, if it goes back to a Zoom. Because of uptick or some other major reason, and it could be even, it could be at six again. So, uh, that's where we are at this point in time, our next meeting. Uh, and not till December sixth, so happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Uh, have a safe and happy holiday, and uh, for those that, that have their kids coming home, like Rob and I, looking forward to it. Uh, I know that they're out this week and then be home for the holiday, so. Uh, thank you, everyone, we'll see you again, uh, in the meantime, don't forget, if you wanna be on the twenty twenty two. Hundred and twenty fifth anniversary of Westwood, uh, reach out to Tish in the selectman's office. Have a good night.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Hickey.
Hi.
Mr. Gotti.
Hi.
And I vote aye as well.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night, everybody.
Enjoy time with your families.